Stand for the pledge, please. Sal can he lead us from the pledge?
I'd like to lead this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces or first responders. Those brave men and women fighting the fight in the Ukraine and for the victims of the Monterey Park shooting where 11 people passed. Thank you.
You want Hannah Cheever?
Sal?
Mr. Speaker. Well, I'm going to do six seconds.
Okay. Hang on one second here.
We can speak on the table, right? That's the only way.
Absolutely. Let me just get the call here that I just had, like two seconds ago. What's that?
Is Chris on the phone?
No, I didn't see it. Legal notice, Town of New Milford warning, notice of public hearing, January 23rd, 2023. Please take notice that pursuant to sections 405, 406 of the Town Charter, the Milford Town Council held a public hearing to hear public comment relating to the following proposed ordinance, moratorium on cannabis establishments in the town of New Milford. It is proposed that the ordinance be added to the New Milford Code of Ordinances as authorized by said charter, sections 405, 406, and chapter 98 of the general statutes. Said public hearing will be held in the E. Paul Martin Room at the New Milford Town Hall, 10 Main Street, at 6:30 PM, January 23rd, 2023. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file at Town Clerk's office and available for examination, dated this day, 17th of January, clocked in by the Town Clerk. Okay, and we have no public, Sal?
No public, sir.
Okay, and we have anybody from the council?
Yes, please. When we spoke about it, my understanding was that we were going to prohibit the sale of cannabis by not allowing stores to come into town until we have more information. Now I'm looking at the list, and it is a longer list, including cultivators and also allied uses, which I'm not sure what that is. But does this open the door then for anyone who's growing marijuana and is allowed to to now not be allowed to?
Randy, I believe you're allowed.
Can you do it privately now?
Yes.
No, it doesn't. It says cannabis establishments. Cannabis establishments are defined in the statute, and it doesn't include homegrown.
So this is the definition, that you're saying that cannabis establishment, everything after that is the definition?
Yeah. If you take a look at the first definition, cannabis establishment is as stated in the statute. So that's not homegrown.
Okay.
I could change it if I was easy enough to change.
Well, I just feel that if the definition of cannabis establishment does not include private use or cultivation, then I'm good, but somehow we need to make sure that that's the definition.
Why don't I say that?
That's the definition.
Why don't I say that?
Because I want to make sure we're not opening a door that could be problematic.
Easy enough. And the reality is that we don't have to have another public hearing because that's clearly excluded.
Okay.
And, but I'll do that in the version that goes.
I don't want to open a door that we didn't plan on opening.
You're not. It's fine. And the question I had is that cannabis establishment is very broad. It includes packaging, things of that nature.
Right.
It's different than just a dispensary facility. So you need to understand that's how broad this is. You can reduce it if you want, but you can't broaden it with the public hearing.
So is it safer?
To keep it as this right now and refer to stature? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it depends on how broad you want the moratorium to be. Here's a question I had in another town, that's why I'm raising it. Another town said, "We don't want to have dispensaries here till we see whether or not they're going to be Department of Public Health regulations and things of that nature. But if there's a grower or a packager, we don't want to preclude that," which is industry. You see what I mean? So that town, what I said is I'd have to limit the ordinance to dispensaries. And you can allow, you can, I could say dispensaries as stated in the statute, but it wouldn't include all the other stuff. So that's up to the, that's up to the Town Council.
I thought the only thing we were talking about was dispensaries originally. I didn't know we had a longer list.
Well, I used the definition in the statute, that's why.
Okay, so that's why I'm questioning what we should be really doing here.
Yeah.
So do we talk about it now or do we talk about it after?
I'll talk about it now.
Now, okay.
Now is the time to talk about it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Does anybody have any thoughts? Katie?
Randy, could you give me the statute that applies?
Sure. Section 8-1, 8-1 CC, and the public act is 21-1 as modified by 22-21.
22-21 it was modified?
21-1, the modification is 22-21. Now, the definition is in the original statute, which is public act 21-1.
Right.
And that's the definition of cannabis establishment.
Which can change.
Pardon me?
That can change in the future, however they're going to ask the judge.
Yeah, I don't know. I tell you, I can't predict what they're going to do because they've done a lot of things nobody can really predict unless.
And Randy, I'm just curious, would it be a better way to clarify if we reference the public act and the sections?
Here's a concern I have. When we reference the public act and the sections, I don't know where they're going to end up in the statutes.
Got it.
And because, for some reason, Connecticut is one of the states that don't, they don't codify, they don't coordinate the codification.
Yep, right, right, right.
So I don't want to kind of do that because you can throw people off that way, in my experience.
Got it.
Now I could find out, I can call legislative office tomorrow.
Well, if they're not going to codify it as they go along, then what?
See, here's the problem.
What's the point?
And I don't mean to be, I'm not being derisive. The problem is they're in session, and anything could happen during the course of the night, and it's a long session.
Right.
So anything could happen. I don't want, I don't want to have to come back to you and explain something like I did with the, with the opt-out provision. That was, that was totally different when, when in the second legislative session. But this can be revised at any time. This is a temporary, temporary measure, and we have stated in here that it can be truncated, extended, anything you want during the course of its life.
Yes, so we moratorium, we say yea, then a grower, packager, a business comes that would be something we'd want, we then meet and do what?
You could, you could revise this. The problem is you're going to chill somebody from coming in here if you have a blanket moratorium. A packager's not going to bother coming to New Milford if they know that there's a moratorium.
You considering this the blanket?
I do.
Right.
This is broad. So what, if you want to, I could simply limit it to cannabis, retail cannabis sales establishments and medical, and that's it.
Well, not, not medical.
Not the facilities. They would be, medical and everything else would be allowed.
Yes, right. So you would use the words.
Retail dispensary facilities, recreational retail dispensary facilities.
That's the word.
Right, but not packaging and things of that nature.
Right, so recreational retail facilities or dispensary?
Retail dispensaries.
We need that word in that.
Retail dispensary facilities.
Randy, just real quick, as a script nurse thing, so today I was at the department head meeting, and I talked about recreational cannabis. And Ivana, who's part of CAN, same as Hillary, is, we should not be using the term recreational.
The only reason I use this is because the statute says it.
That's what I said, but my question would be.
I can say adult use as stated in the statute.
Yeah, can we say that instead?
I can, and that would be consistent with what the statute says because it relates to adult use.
Okay, so.
Adult non-medical use, I could do that.
So rather than recreational retail dispensary facilities, adult?
Yeah, I could do that. Adult retail, adult cannabis dispense, I could come up with something that dovetails with the statute without saying recreation. Words are my business, so.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand why we were doing the moratorium, and does this, you know, I don't think this changes the, you know, I think that all of the things that are in here are the reason we're on a moratorium. We just don't know the outcomes yet. We don't know all of the fallout or the, you know, repercussions. So I feel like that we, you know, this is to be determined, so I just think leaving the big umbrella is the way to go, but.
Well, that's why I was saying that, except that Randy's saying that going back could be problematic. Is, is there a way to say that this is the moratorium on adult cannabis retail dispensary facilities? You don't want to use the establishments? That doesn't cover anything?
Usually I don't want to use that because somebody's going to come in and say, "When you say establishments, it's broad."
Yeah, that's right, it is.
Because that's what the legislature did.
Okay.
So I'd like to use, I mean, I'd use whatever you tell me to do. I have no opinion on this, but if we're going to write it, we want to write it correctly.
So would it be adult cannabis?
I would say adult.
Retail dispensary facilities?
Yes, adult use cannabis retail dispensary facilities.
Adult use?
Right. That's what the statute says, it says recreation, it says adult.
Retail dispensary facilities.
Because it's already illegal for kids.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And don't forget, you can come back anytime. The concern I have again is if somebody wants to come in and do a production facility or whatever, I don't want to chill them when they see this because they won't even bother.
Well, somebody who wanted to do that to that degree, don't you think they would know that we did have the, I mean, they would understand the language?
Assume.
They obviously must know a little bit of the legal language or they wouldn't be in that particular business.
Yeah, but, but when I write something.
Because if we don't have this, then we're right back to letting somebody come along.
I don't know anybody who has a license for New Milford, by the way, but I only did that on phone calls. I don't know that definitively.
Just sounds like a work in progress.
That's not the point.
Because we're kind of stuck waiting for somebody else to change.
Right, and that's what we talked about when we said, "What do we do here?"
Right.
And that's why towns are doing a moratorium.
Right.
Because.
So Randy, I know you, as you say you don't do legislation, which is what this body does, but asking you as our town attorney, with this going back to these legislature, who could change this as they have before? To kind of hedge our bets, to make it, I don't want to say the word safe, but to hedge our bets the most, do you think we should have the wide blanket on everything while they're still in session? And then recraft it as if they make changes or we know the finality of it, rather than all of a sudden we do one portion and then you still have another part of cannabis, whether it be production or whether it be plants, and they change that on us like they've changed some of the stuff before, and then we're stuck in having to come back and maybe widen the blanket or not? I mean, what, as, as just a legal advice, what would that be?
Well, I could, I'm not elected.
You say you're elected, you.
I don't think I'd do anything. I think I'd leave, but I don't know. And the reason I would do that is because I don't know what the legislature's going to do. I don't know what our ordinance is going to, whether it's going to be sustained or not sustained.
Right.
And I don't know whether or not we're going to have piecemeal legislation either.
Right.
So just what you're saying, if we do the blanket establishment, cannabis establishment, I've just drafted a law for my client that says that no cannabis establishment is be allowed. And then if they start changing the definition of establishments, then we're going, we have to go back again. But that's my concern.
So is it your opinion to leave it as a moratorium like it is right now?
If you're going to do anything, I would do a moratorium on sales, on retail sales of adult use cannabis.
But is it that what we have here?
No, this is, this is broader than that.
No, no, the way we just.
Oh, yeah, the way we propose to modify.
As moratorium on adult use cannabis retail dispensary facilities.
Yes, that's what I would do.
That covers?
Just sales.
The adult, the facility, and not establishments and adult.
That's right. It's not as broad, and it's more, it's more flexible, if you will. And we don't.
It's our language versus the state's language that they could change.
Yes, and the fact is, is that, is that if somebody wants to come in and put a lot of money in our town in order to do a production or a packaging facility, packaging facility, I don't, I don't want to chill that. Again, I'm talking as, I'm not a legislator.
We, yeah, we heard you.
I'm really nervous about giving my opinion, I'm mad.
Right, and is your opinion that we not specify the statute in this?
No, I would, I would, I would, I would refer to the statute because the statute also allows us to do a moratorium.
Right, and that's, it's just, it's not here, and normally, you know, we would in something like this refer back to the statute so someone couldn't say, "Well, who knows what statute you were looking at?"
Yeah, that's, that's what we, that's all municipal lawyers do. You always go to the legislation, to the enabler legislation.
Exactly, right, and that was section 8-1 CC.
CC.
21-21 is modified by 21.
I'm sorry, it's not 8-1 CC.
That's what you said.
I, I, that's the wrong statute. That's the outdoor dining statute. I don't have that on top of my head right now.
One goes with the other.
Especially if they sell Doritos.
But you'll, you'll.
I will, I apologize for that.
Tom?
I was listening on the way down, I apologize for being late, but I was listening to you on YouTube, and, and I, I tend to agree with you. I think the, the regulation for adult cannabis use for dispensaries, we put a moratorium on because we don't know really where the law is going to change.
Right.
But I'm in the same opinion as some of us that I don't want to stop a factory from coming in here or somebody that is going to create some jobs, give us some tax revenue, and is doing this under the letter of the law. I don't have a problem with that, but I would, I would tend to agree with, I think, some of us here that let's not quell that, let's not put a blanket on, on potential jobs and tax dollars. But I think the moratorium for the dispensary, until we know what the legislation is, until the whole community really reaches out, I'm in favor of that.
I can also speak to one thing, it has nothing to do with this town, but in another town, an officer, police officer told me that, "Who's going to enforce this?"
Yeah.
They don't want, the police troopers don't want to enforce this.
Right.
Because it's illegal statewide, and, and, and they're enforcing an ordinance by way of a ticket. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
So I never thought of that because my job's not enforcement. My job's to write what you tell me to write. But that was in another town. And they're, now they're, they're, they're protected by state trooper, by state troopers.
Resident state.
Quite frankly, I don't think the state's going to go backwards once they get hooked on the money, like every other state in this country. It is just a, it's a, it's a money spigot that has paid for a lot of infrastructure. I don't think we're going to go backwards, but.
It's a 20% sales tax.
Yeah.
So far.
Yeah, so far.
So what did Litchfield do?
Litchfield just feel banned completely.
That's what I.
There's a movement afoot, however, Litchfield, there's some petitions going on up there because somebody came to my door.
I'll bet.
Let's bond it then.
So I don't know how long that's going to last, but right now it's the law of the town.
It's one of the reasons that people should listen when there's a public hearing or a discussion going on about something, they should come and talk about it before it gets enacted against the legal.
Morris has one pending too. They banned, but that's not, I don't think that's got too much traction.
Morris?
Morris.
But they don't have too many people either.
That's true, that's true.
Two and a half people living over there, maybe three or something.
Two and a half nice people.
That is true.
Any other discussion?
I know them all.
Any other discussion? Okay, like to make.
I'm sorry to be ambiguous, I just can't.
No, you're not.
I was asking because this would be a long list to enforce.
Absolutely.
And very problematic for a lot of people, and I think that, let's not confuse the issue. We only spoke about dispensaries when we started this conversation.
That's right.
And I like to keep it there.
And Randy, it's going to be verbiage in there that those people allowed by state law can grow their own, whatever, I think it's two plants or something like that.
With home cultivation.
Nothing with home.
Yeah.
That's an easy one.
Okay.
Randy, a quick question from the enforcement side. I remember reading you years or so ago that they were trying to come up with like a breathalyzer for this or that the police, is that, is that available now?
There's a swab now.
Is it a swab?
Yeah.
Is there something? Because I mean, eventually, you know.
I read the same article you did, but I don't know, I haven't followed it.
I mean, obviously, we don't want people driving or operating machinery with it, but I didn't, I just didn't know whether there was an accurate test, like a breathalyzer for alcohol.
I'm getting the impression from the state troopers that I've talked to that they're going to, they're going to enforce, just like they enforce DUI. If somebody's considered to be, and they're going to have to do it that way, because they're not going to do randomly stop people from, you know? It's just not going to happen.
No.
But there is a company developing a swab.
A swab, right, yeah. I knew there was some technology coming.
So I should change it to just, just.
Moratorium on adult use cannabis retail dispensary facilities.
Is that everybody's?
Just to be clear, that means somebody could come into the mill and start growing acres and acres of cannabis legally and.
As long as they have a license.
And fine with the town council, just to be clear.
State license.
If they have the license, yeah. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Which is not cheap.
And they would have to, they would have to go through the zoning process and area, and the same process anyone would go through.
That we have a right to farm ordinance.
There you go. Is it part of the right to farm ordinance?
I would argue. It could be.
We just keep the lawyers busy for the council.
Yes, indeed.
He's kind of lost.
They keep passing legislation. It was like, it was like the, it was like the executive orders two years ago. There were a lot of those, a lot of them.
Right. Any other discussion?
I mean, I just have to say, I feel like sort of sick to my stomach, but I, you know, I feel like the hypocrisy of saying, "Don't do drugs," but then allow, you know, so I'm very conflicted on this issue, so I feel that it's a hard vote, but, you know, so, but the research is sort of ambiguous, you know, how is the, how has it affected the youth in Colorado? You know, it's, at first it was very bad, now it's leveling out, you know, so I think that, anyway, it's a hard vote.
You know, you know how I got a kick out of Governor Brown, Jerry Brown?
Yeah.
He was a stoner when he was in the 60s, when he was governor. And he was not, giving an interview one day, he says he's very concerned about legalizing marijuana because he's worried about the effect it's going to have on production with people using it every day or every hour of the day.
But it didn't turn out that way, did it?
Yeah, no, no.
He wasn't the most productive governor.
But that's funny.
Since when I was a kid, it just didn't turn out that way.
They said that about superficial.
Right.
They said that alcohol would ruin people's lives, and here we are today, so.
Right.
Right. And there are of course exceptions to all of those rules.
Right, exactly.
There's no comparison with the alcohol and the smoking pot, let's face it. Two different things.
Some could say they both do damage to people.
Yeah.
Yeah, ish.
It's a free country.
It creates a lot of pain, you'd want to.
Short term.
Any more, any more discussion on the public hearing? Like entertain a motion to close our public hearing?
Some more?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We'll be at 7:00 PM. We'll start our regular town council meeting.
Beautiful.
Short-term.
Any more, any more discussion on the public hearing? Like entertain a motion to close our public hearing?
Some more.
Second?
Have a second. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We'll be at 7:00 PM. We'll start our regular town council meeting.
Beautiful.
I'm going to motion it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We all could rise for the pledge, please. Paul, can you lead us in the pledge, please, sir?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, our veterans, those fighting the good fight in the Ukraine, and those men and women victims of the Monterey Park shooting, where 11 people passed away. And also to Anna Chapin, who served this town for many, many decades. May her memory be eternal. Thank you. Yep. And, I don't know, just getting.
You're standing or sitting?
Yep, now we're going to stand. I'm just going to get this.
You want to read it?
Okay. Sal, can you lead us in the American creed, please? Okay.
On your front page.
I believe in the United States of America. As a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the governed, a democracy and a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable. Establish those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity, for which American patriots sacrificed their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies.
Thank you. Sal, public comments, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. John Baker, Joe Baker, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Joe Baker. I live at 14 Maplewood Drive in New Milford, and I'm here to talk about zoning and the support of their budget and funding for zoning enforcement. As discussed by our chairman, Chairman of Zoning, Bill Taylor, at, before you all here, November 14th, there's a lack of zoning enforcement in New Milford, and that's based upon a lack of staffing to do that enforcement. So I'm here to plead with you to fund zoning enforcement in whatever way is necessary. I've been told there's several reasons why we shouldn't do it, and one is because it makes us business unfriendly. And I would say it's absolutely to the contrary. Right now, the environment is business unfriendly, because only those who want to break the rules get an advantage. The people who follow the rules are at a disadvantage, because they live up to the regulations that we put in place. And the people who want to flaunt the rules, they just do so with impunity. So, to the business-friendly point of view, I would argue the point that enforcement makes it more business-friendly. The other point of view, I've been told many times, is it's too much of a cost burden, because the fines don't support the enforcement. It's pretty straightforward, raise the fines. So that, you know, the people that are breaking our regulations, and of course, you know, are told, are given multiple notifications that they're breaking our regulations and still want to flaunt the rules, they have to pay the penalty for that. I would like to give a shout-out to Laura Reagan, who does a magnificent job. She does a wonderful job, she wears many hats for this town, and I'd really like to thank her for all her good efforts and her professionalism. My last point is, you know, there are attempts at times to enforce something, but that's selective enforcement. It's not fair, it's not right, and if people object to it and fight it in the courts, you won't win. So, you know, to make our system, our system of zoning, fair, we need to generally enforce zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Delancy?
Good evening. I'm James P. Delancy, 11 Geiger Road in New Milford, Connecticut, known by Jim. Also, the commander of the VFW here in New Milford. I'm here to just bring up some stuff that the VFW has been doing for the last three to four years, very steadily. And we have opened the doors to Red Cross two times a month for the last three years, Lifeline, which is another medical evaluation of your arteries and all that, they use it two times a year. We have the New Milford, three different New Milford Boy Scout groups in there. One Cub Scouts, two Boy Scouts, we have a New Milford Business Group in there. We now hosting a Designer Bingo for the PTO, for the high school graduates, Class of 23. And we also have, the Chamber of Commerce can be using it. And of course, we do have our regular low rentals. But what I'm trying to say is that the VFW is no longer just a private club that belongs to some veterans and what used to be said to be that, a bunch of drunk guys sitting around telling war stories. Those days are gone. They were never there, but everybody thought there was. So we are in the public eye, we want to be part of this community, which we have been over the last, since 1926. And we are moving forward in this day. Unfortunately, our building has shown its age. We just put a brand-new roof on it, thanks to a grant from ARPA and the mayor helping us get that grant. Now, we had the air conditioners on the roof, and we could never stop the leaks. And how bad it was when they took the air conditioners off. After they backed them, they actually, two of them folded it right in half, so they were shot. They've been up there since '72, '73, somewhere's in there. Now we're looking to get mini splits put in there. Our roof, originally, we had a grant offered, awarded to us for $100,000. We only used $60,000 of that, because we took the less of all the bids. And he did a fabulous job, even though he was like two months late. It hasn't leaked, and everything looks great. And the building really looks clean without those air conditioners on top. So we'd like to get the mini splits, and we had $40,000 left over in our original one. I would like everyone, if possible, to vote yes on getting our new air conditioners in, because like I said, we are in more of donating the hall, low rental out on the hall, and we do a lot of stuff, we even do a lot of stuff for the kids. We do have, we did have breakfast with Santa, we're going to be doing breakfasts with Easter Bunny, and maybe even Mother's Day. And we do a lot of fundraising. We just finished a big fundraiser for Cody Law, which we hosted the whole thing, including, we did all the cooking and everything for it. And they cleared over $2,700. And that's a good turnout for Cody's Law. So, please, when you vote, please vote yes. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Commander.
Thank you. No more public participation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Katie?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve item four, the consent agenda. That'd be items four, A, prior minutes, B, tax collector, and C, the senior center.
Say it.
Senior center wants to accept a donation for a magnetic dry erase board with wheels, it's approximately $125 value, a senior donor who wished to remain anonymous, and they thanked that donor.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Nope.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Chris?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure you let Stephanie know that I'm in the meeting.
Thank you. Correction to the minutes, please. Under Board of Finance, the motion to approve the two seats on there, there were three people who are listed as voting no, that was actually an abstention that night, and not no's. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. For Chris? Okay. Next is Mayor's comments. I'd like to start with bringing our New Milford varsity football team in.
Will you give me your phone?
Did you have him come in?
Pete, will you give me your phone, I'll take the picture?
Give me a quick one.
Get on photo.
You'll hear them before they get here.
Hey, Mayor, Beth.
Nice to see you. Glad you came tonight.
Remember, you challenged me to do that hack, may I promise.
That's right, we're going to do that, right? We're going to do that.
Coach is over. You guys could stand like right here. Hey, we have parents in everybody, they can put their chairs over here. So, the parents are in there. We have people in the middle too, Coach. You have to make sure your guys in the middle too. Have your team, whatever. Let's go one at a time. More people, come on in. Pack this place, come on in. Has got more seats back here, too. Come on in, everybody. All right, so Katie will come over here for a minute.
Okay.
All right. So first of all, congratulations.
Thank you for turning the tide, here, showing pride, honor for our town. And watching these kids wearing green and white, a lot of pride. You know, when you guys beat Danburg, that was a special day for me, let me tell you. We had a few goal calls, so beating Danburg, one-take-one, but you kind of think, you know who may be. And I let it know how unbelievably proud we are of them. So with that being said, I'd like to first start with you, Coach. And we're going to kind of, just kind of the same thing for everybody, so we'll announce the names. But Coach, for the town of New Milford, we'd like to recognize Coach Murray and the New Milford High School varsity football team for having a record-breaking season. The New Milford High School varsity football team made the state tournament for the first time in school history.
Yep.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Glad to achieve back-to-back winning seasons for the first time since nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two. Congratulations, Coach. Outstanding. Congratulations, sir. That old line called pretty tough. Can't thank you enough. Keep it going.
Appreciate it.
Coach showing the home, Coach Murray. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. There you are. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Coach? There he is. Coach Warren. Coach Lyons. Coach Flynn. Coach Jasso. Coach Ballsy. Coach Wilkin, where are you? Pete's not here? He's absent. But Coach, he's a little deep. He's out, okay. All right. Now we're gonna list some players. All right, are we ready?
Alphabetical.
They're alphabetical, okay. Jaden Alfano. Outstanding season. Andrew Brown. Congratulations on great seasons. Outstanding. Cody Carlson. Congratulations. Outstanding. Isaiah Collin. Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Marco Delime. John Marco. Congratulations. Jamai Paliza. Congratulations. Outstanding. Juan Espinoza. Congratulations. Outstanding. Aiden Ezra. Angelo Fernandez. Congratulations. Liam Flynn. Congratulations. Braden Ganzer. Congratulations. Thank you. Tynan. Tynan. Is it? Kayamina?
Kayamina.
Kayamina. Alfredo? Congratulations on great season. Outstanding. Brayden Osteen. William Provinsky. Jameer Robertson Witherspoon. Outstanding. Congratulations. Jeremy Santos. Dylan Stedman. Mark Taylor. Congratulations. Outstanding. Mr. Ballsy. Ryan Foreman. Thomas Krasowski. Jaden Espinaw. Riccardi Fernandez. Ryder Jean. Feeling better?
Yeah.
All right. Sean Hoyt. Brady King. Outstanding. Michael Lane. Congratulations. Jackson Drew. Riley Mahomes. Brian Manka. Richard Mariano. Matthew Morales. Congratulations. Landon. Popacek. Roman Quinn. Anthony Ryan. Zachary White. Nick Allen. Gianni Bar- Bar- Barber. Teagan Bowers. Teagan. Daryl Bron- Darnell Bronson. Congratulations, Darnell.
Outstanding.
Alex Brown. Great job. Matt De Lima. Elliot Derby. John Dodger. Congratulations, John. Outstanding. Ryder Lagon- Lagonis. Congratulations. Cole Jennings. Kelvin Mendoza. Sebastian Ramler. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Danny Reed. Chris Reese. Jason Scowgo. Colby Shears. Brandon Small. Brayden Tilford. Derek Wallace. Congratulations, Derek. Aiden Watson. All right, buddy. Matt Alfano. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you. Tyler Caldwell. Congratulations, Tyler. Giles Crochet. Michael Cruz. Teddy Des- Desinfants. Congratulations. Boden Degado. Joseph Fleming. Derek Flores. Mickinson Houghton. Galvin Leish Robinson. Congratulations, thank you. Chris McKenzie. Doug Post. Phoenix. Mike Saunders. Congratulations. Frank Scala. Congratulations, thank you. Max Shaw. Teagan Stedman. Nick Vouches. Liam Ziegler. Coach, did we miss anybody?
Did we miss anybody?
Joey Russell.
Joey Russell.
Make sure we get you yours, okay, buddy? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Coach, would you like to say a couple of words to everybody?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. First of all, thank you for your support.
Totally.
This is awesome. Um, and it's impossible without the hard work of these kids. They, they should get all the credit. I mean, we just try to put them in the right spot. They do all the work on you, so you guys earned this. And again, you young guys, I hope we continue to build off of this and see all the good stuff that comes with hard work, not just on the field, but off the field as well. So Mayor Pete, thank you again. We are greatly, greatly appreciative of this opportunity.
Outstanding. Thank you, guys. Absolutely, you and your staff. It's a testament of how you guys coach by having all these young men playing.
Thank you.
So outstanding. Thank you, guys. A new season.
You wanna get a picture with everybody? Slide in a little bit. It's gonna be tough, but you don't get everybody in this room that often. All right, everybody look up. Great time, everyone. Couple more. There we go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Doug, doesn't it just take you back to your football days to some of those kids?
I miss that smell.
What? Black sneakers, yeah.
Yeah. It's like a locker room.
It's about time New Milford managed to end the good season.
Yeah. The rest of you have got to keep it short now. He's still downtown.
No wonder we never made it in the old days. The kids were too small.
You see, they used to reference the tide in there.
Yeah, I wanted to. I wanted to.
I heard you say tide.
Couple times. Dougie caught that. Oh, man, that's sweet.
So speaking of the Giants, these teams could beat them.
So Katie, in expediency of time, I'm going to talk about Mayor's comments maybe later, depending on the time.
All right, we'll move on to item six. I'd like to move to appoint the following to the Board of Finance. Corey Linder as an alternate, term of January 23rd, 2023 to November 30th, 2026. On the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, move for Diane Seibert as an alternate, term of February 1st, 2023 to January 31st, 2025. And Brian Casari, also February 1st, 2023 to January 31st, 2025. Item 6A is a reappointment of the Riverfront Revitalization Committee. Christopher Gardner, term of February 1st, 2023, January 31st, 2025. And Leba Furman, the same, February 1st, 2023 to January 31st, 2025. Sports Complex, this is a temporary subcommittee, reappointing all of the people that were there before. Their term is February 27th of 2023 through August 26th of 2023. And those would be Robert Beebe, Tom Pillar, Doug Skelly, John Wren, Chris Cosgrove, Amy Lee Grinder, Christopher DiCaro, Michael Sinello, Alexandra Thomas, Jana Larkin, and Matthews Reynolds.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
The council knows me, I'm Leba Furman, you know Chris Gardner. We've both come from very different communities since conception, but we have a new member joining us, and I thought it would be nice for you to get to see her and meet her in person, Diane Seibert.
Seibert. Oh, sorry.
I'm going to learn one of these days, Seibert, I can spell it. So she's here if you have any questions or would like to say hello.
Welcome. Thank you for offering your time.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number seven, Parks and Rec. I'd like to move that we take action on parks and recreation fees. Is there a motion?
A motion out, I can second that.
Thank you.
We have a second. Randy, could you swear in the ones that are here already?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Randy.
You doing all of us?
Yes.
All of you.
Sure, let's make this really formal. There you go.
Or affirm, as the case may be, that you carry out the duties of your office fairly faithfully, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for spending your time on this. Okay. Okay, so we had, yeah, go.
I wanted to bring, each year I bring our fee structure to your attention for approval. Our Park and Rec Subcommittee went through this quite thoroughly, and then it was brought to the Complete Park and Rec Commission, and they approved it. So now I'm bringing it to you for your review.
Any comments or discussion? Questions to Dan? Silver?
Can you tell me what the summer playground for the park is?
Summer playground?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a summer camp program. We have, actually, we're going to have three sites this year. Scotticoke School, Northville School, and John Pettibone Community Center. There'll be three separate sites for children in New Milford.
What time does that run, Dan?
Nine to three in the, six weeks in the summer. Starts around July 1st.
Is that the vacation camp you're talking about?
It's all, yeah, that's.
But I'm asking, the six week, the 27.59 a day?
Yeah, that's an old number. They're all, we have, what we're doing this year, last year we had a, we started the vacation camp, and it was just three weeks. This year, we're doubling the time. We're going to go to six weeks for that program.
Okay, and the price went up from 500 to 800?
Yes. And that is due to the yearly minimum wage increase, additional staffing levels. Paying, trying to get staffing is very difficult, as everyone knows. We've had to raise our salaries up just a little bit. Also, all of our summer camp kids at the vacation, what used to be the vacation camp, are going to go on a trip every day to somewhere, whether it's a town park, or go to amusement park or something.
That was the additional transportation cost, too, right, Dan?
Transportation, as everyone knows, busing is very expensive. So all of our kids would be able to go on all the trips now. That's another thing we're doing this year. In the past, we had only had a limited number of seats available for each campsite. This year, we're allowing everyone to go, and so our fees went up to cover that, those costs.
Right, it's just a significant jump. I wonder if that's going to.
Yeah, it is. It is a jump, but we've been trying to revive that program over the years. It's, numbers have been decreasing. We're trying to get more interest, offer a lot more activities for the kids, get them out of the classroom and school, and get them outside, get them doing activities. If we look at it, it's only, it's 444 an hour for a kid to go to camp.
It's $19 a day for a kid to go to camp.
Yeah, so it is still.
It is significantly cheaper for a father who put two kids through camp for about 15 years. That is ridiculously cheap, and one of the greatest values this community has ever delivered to its citizens.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, the only reason I'm asking is because, you know, there was a lot, some surplus money, 263,858, and some ARPA funds went to Parks and Rec. So I was just wondering if, you know, some of those, some of that money could be seen in savings for, you know, for the families of New Milford who are paying for their kids to go to camp. So that's why I'm questioning the big increase with, you know, on top of getting a total of 297,683 this year from ARPA and surplus money. So that's why I'm pushing back on this. That's all, because, you know, for the families, it might, it might be something that they can't, they can't push to. You know, they're trying to afford groceries or whatever. So I'm just questioning if it's the right move.
Just another thing, in regards to that, we do have a scholarship program with our Social Services Department. So many kids can go there and get either partial or full scholarships based on need. And that, we have numerous kids that do that every year.
And we've been doing that for a long time.
Yes.
This opportunity has always been there for people who couldn't afford it.
Correct.
Right? And we do it in a way that is gentle, not to make anybody feel embarrassed. I know that has always been across the spectrum here, that we do it very confidentially. So nobody knows who does that assistance.
Yeah, no one knows, except for the Social Services Director and myself.
I mean, even to comment on whatever you got for ARPA, that's a one-time fund, right? I know it went to a lot of very good things. Yeah, so I fully support your fee structure here, because we have always been undercharging for the services and the opportunities that you lend folks. I mean, the boat slips, a no-brainer. We were, I still think we're cheaper than everybody on the lake. I think this was a very reasonable increase.
Thank you. Kate?
Thanks, Dan. One thing I'll just say in regard to the scholarships, United Way has a program called the Allison Richment Fund, and they can find out about it through me at United Way, or they can go to Social Services. And that provides $300 per child, up to three children per family, for various enrichment activities. So I realize that this camp is not usually covered. However, if their children might want to do something other than that, they could find, you know, maybe they're doing this because it is an economical item for the summer, but there are other options, and I know you have subscriptions as well. I just want to ask, you went up $50 on the boat slip.
Correct.
With a sticker. And as Tom just pointed out, and we say every year, is we are the least expensive boat slip in town, in the, on the lake. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because the seniors' boat slip with sticker went up $100 instead of $50. So it's the ever-present question of, why are we sticking it to the old folks?
It went up 50.
I thought it went up 100.
No, it went up 50.
Well, see, I'm old, let me put my glasses on.
Yeah, they both went up 50.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, it went up 50 also. But I guess, okay, well, I'm still going to say, I'm surprised that you're increasing it for the seniors, except I suppose your attitude, or not your attitude, but your rationale is if a senior can afford a boat, they have to have a slip for it. Is that part of it? Okay, sorry about that. I didn't have my glasses on. But I would, I would ask that, at some point, we really take an assessment of the other spots along this lake and the other five, the other four towns, and get ourselves up where we can at least feel better about what we're charging. I mean, it's expensive to have a boat, I understand, it's expensive by the gas, but it's also an excellent opportunity for somebody who has a boat to use our area. As you know, it's just one of the best, and it's beautiful, and there are beautiful docks, so.
It's one of the reasons why they sell out so quickly.
I, absolutely.
So Katie, let me help you out with that. Since I sat at Park and Rec for six years, I actually did an analysis with all the towns around. And so, and Dan knows this, because we had many meetings of it. So we, what we want to do is we wanted to go up in increments that didn't affect them as much, but we're still, I'd say, Dan, anywhere from 20 to 40% lower comparison to Newtown, to Brookfield and stuff like that. So we did our homework, and we know that we have one of the greatest beaches around. And it's a hidden gem.
The best beach on the lake.
Yeah, and so, I'm glad you mentioned that, because, you know, with, you know, the board or the commissioner at Park and Rec has to sit down and evaluate every year costs and stuff like that, you know, new dockings and stuff like that, and take care of the stuff. But they did an excellent job. And I'm a little biased, because I sat there for six years, but we did do our due diligence, and we went around to the other towns.
And we talk about this every year, and I'm just making a statement, that I'm happy we have people from other towns come here. I'm very happy that they love our town. I just think we should charge them a little bit more to put that love into the boat slip.
We go up a little bit, well, not we, but they go up a little bit in increments. And I'll tell you, just from the private Lake Marina's, some of the boats are around $3,000 to $3,500, just for the, for the same-sized boats. So we do still give them a great deal.
Yeah, we do.
That's all. Just wanted to give you some props, Dan. I know you guys do your homework over there.
Thank you, Dan, otherwise, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about my not seeing anything.
Hi, Dan. How many individual children have served this past summer, for example, in your summer program?
Okay, so this year, last year was the first time we ever did this. We started offering, we used to only offer, you had to buy it in a six-week lump, so. Now we broke it down, so kids can just sign up for a week at a time. So probably our best week would probably be about 177 kids, but we're hoping for more this year with this new six-week program.
Okay, but that's not individual, if I can't multiply that number by the number of weeks, because some of those children did more than one week?
Right.
Right? So I don't know how many individual children were served.
I would say probably, if we mixed it up, there was probably 400 mixed, but some had, only went for a week, some went for the full six weeks, so it's.
And how many are you hoping for, for this coming summer?
We're hoping between 2 and 250. That's, our goal would be 250, I'd love to have 250.
A week?
No, for the, well, 250, yeah, any one given time in one week, yeah.
Six weeks, sorry. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Were you, your budget last year was 215,574 revenue? Were you over, over that in revenues?
Last year? Yeah, revenues came in very.
So revenues came up above?
A lot last year, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just, the only reason I'm really pushing back on this camp thing is because the taxpayers, you know, paid for the ARPA funds, the surplus, and I think this is how it's supposed to get spread out, right? So we approved the funds to go to Park and Rec, where ARPA, but I think now is the time where it comes back to the taxpayer. So for the camps, I don't, I don't think we should raise.
I don't think we had any ARPA funds for summer camp in general.
But it went towards your, I mean, you know, it's going to offset costs somewhere, right?
It went mostly, it was for equipment and things like that.
Right.
Mostly capital expenses.
The taxpayer money wasn't ARPA.
Yeah, that's federal government money.
That's all about taxpayer money. So it is, it's taxpayer money to help everybody.
Taxpayer coming out of the budget.
It came from 365 million people, not the 29, you know, not the 29,000 in the town in New Milford.
I mean, between the ARPA and the surplus, the 297,683, it's 23% of your, of an annual budget. I mean, that's a huge amount of money coming into your, into your budget. So I think we can say to the kids, we're going to keep them where they are.
Personally, I think for $19 a day, it's a steal. Any other summer camp in this region is anywhere from $40 to $50 a day, at least, and they don't get anywhere near what they get delivered from Park and Rec.
They should move to New Milford. Dan?
Yes.
How does our summertime camp compare to Brookfield or Newtown?
I think we're pretty close. I looked last year, and we were a little lower last year. Actually, my kids don't live in this town, but they were trying to go to camp, and it was significantly higher. We are a good deal.
But this is for residents?
But this is just for residents, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Non-residents pay more than the residents would.
And it's tough, Dan, because you want to go through a specific line item and start taking from one, and then you get somebody else saying, how come this isn't free? How come we don't take that off? So it's a slippery slope to find out. But I think overall, you're giving everybody a break on the whole scale, as opposed to individual.
We try to be fair and try not to overwhelm the residents with fees. This year.
And Dan, to answer Hillary's question, you have to look in totality of your whole programs of Park and Rec.
Correct.
So your budget, I believe in, let me tell if I'm right or not, I believe our budget is well over $1.2 million. So the taxpayers supplant the differentials by what you do for revenues, so the town, the taxpayers supplement that. Am I correct?
You're correct.
So we continue to see if we could get additional revenue to help offset the taxes that our taxpayers pay each and every day.
Definitely.
So if we don't get those revenues, then we're going to have to then charge higher taxes.
Well, for example, in the surplus is the truck for the kayaks, right? So that's funding a particular program from the surplus money that then will bring in revenue. You know, no cost to Parks and Rec, because they got the truck, they're going to charge for the kayak service, that's going to be additional revenue. That's on the taxpayers this year. So there, at some point, it should go back, right?
Well, it does go back, because those revenues help supplant the differential, because the revenues just don't pay for Park and Rec. The taxpayers pay over 50%, well over 50% of Park and Rec. So the little bit more we can get in revenue helps offset that 50 to 60% that the taxpayers pay anyway for Park and Rec.
Along with the fact that for many years, you were, the equipment was old, and we didn't really have it in our budgets to be able to give you some of those capital expenses that you needed, and that's where some of that went. Now, some of that ARPA fund is a revenue generator, right? You now have a truck that now you can bring more of these kayaks, which I heard were incredibly successful last year. The handful of times I was down there, those kayaks were constantly in use.
Right.
This is some, these are benefits for the town, and a nice little revenue driver to keep that beautiful park and all of our parks in great shape like they are.
Dan, just a question, oh, sorry, Mayor Jane. I was going to say, about how many pro, this is just part of what you do, you have, do you have an idea how many programs in all you have? I mean, pom-pom making, cutting out, painting, tikes, jumping, karate?
If you mix, probably a hundred, over a hundred different programs. And some of these programs are offered numerous times throughout the year.
There's nothing really to do with this particular thing. I just wanted you to know that, aside from all the questions and my not understanding this, that I think you do a great job with programs.
Thank you.
I do, too.
Just for the justification, because we have these in our budget books, we have these in our books. So just this year, Park and Rec costs the taxpayers $1,304,541 to operate. Okay? Our actual revenues, which is what Park and Rec charges, correct, Dan?
Correct.
And Park and Rec charges for both the tap, both the services and the parks themselves, right, Dan?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we have fees for recreation and the parks.
Okay. And those numbers, budgetary-wise, let me grab that real quick, I just had it, sorry.
Want my glasses? They help me.
Yeah, I may, I may need your glasses. Yeah, I may, I may need your glasses.
Last year's fees were two-hundred-and-fifty.
It didn't help me very much.
You got that there, Greg? Because I just had it. I threw it in my table. Should be, I think, page four on the revenue.
Five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, sixty-eight dollars.
So we have to make up that over five-hundred additional thousand dollars to our taxpayers. And how do we do that? By adding additional programs, by charging use fees, which we can, as Tom says. And then Dan and his team at Park and Rec and the commission members say, okay, how can we, it's a very fine balance. How can we do that but then make it affordable to those in need? Twenty dollars a day to have your child go to, right? Dan, they could go to a park, they could go bowling, they could go to a whole different other type of things.
Right.
So to me, it's a fine balance that we do. And I commend you, and I commend the commission. And again, just so the public can listen in on TV here, it's the cost, the whole cost in totality. That's what we look at. One million, three-hundred-and-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-one dollars against revenues.
And the fact that you raised it to six weeks is a fantastic opportunity for families because that was the big issue.
Right.
When my kids went there, it was for a shorter period of time. You needed a place to, another camp to send them to. And quite frankly, these other camps locally were about fifty dollars a day. And they were with a lot of different kids, but my kids loved it because they saw their friends from school. It was a way to continue those relationships throughout the summer, and they always came out of there having a great day.
Mary Jane?
So Dan, I just have a question. How do you let families know that there is the scholarship money that they can apply for?
We, actually, it's part of our registration process, and we, and I think Social Services also advertises that. They need, if people need assistance, they can go to them, but we always let.
How is that part of your registration process? Like, is it, is there something written, you know?
We let them know if they, you know, that there is options for them to go there.
Do you let everybody know that, or is it?
Yes, everybody knows.
Every single person that comes in that applies that wants to sign up, you're telling them?
Yeah, we can make sure they know. Yeah, definitely. We can make sure they know that. But it's always, it's never been an issue. We've always been able to find the help for them, if people need help. We usually walk them right down. If somebody comes in and says they're in need, I'll send them right down to Social Services. But a lot of times, Social Services Department already knows the families that are in need, and they work with them on a regular basis already.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you put it in your catalog, too?
We don't do a catalog. Everything's online these days.
It's all online, yeah.
Yeah, but we do it on our website, and also the mayor puts things out for us on.
Right, so it does show that there's funding available.
Yes.
On the, on your webpage.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? And we have a motion and a second, right?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
Okay. Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dan.
Did Chris vote?
Chris?
Yep, I said aye.
Yep.
I said aye, sorry.
I'll make sure. Item number eight, we have a resolution regarding the Office of Policy Management and Neglected Cemetery Grant Program for 2023. And it resolved that Pete Bass, Mayor of the Town in New Milford, is authorized to apply for and accept on behalf of the town a grant from the neglected cemetery account. Mayor Bass is also authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said grant, should the town be selected for the grant award.
And these, thank you, Tom. And these are between two- and three-thousand-dollar grants, and these are for cemeteries that, as we all know, in New Milford, we have quite a few of those. Those have been neglected because they've been full, and they've kind of been abandoned. So we've been able to use these funds to help supplant that, to help move those forward. And can't thank Adam Alasi-Kuhn enough for really helping us with this.
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number nine, move that we accept the request from the Milford Social Services for the transfer of forty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars and ninety cents from the New Milford Police Department High Risk Navigator Salary Line Account, to the Social Services Department Salary Line Account, for the position of the social worker slash crisis navigator.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have seen one question. I think the request was for sixty-five thousand?
Yeah, the forty-three was because we're in the medical of the fiscal year.
Ah, thank you. So it's, just needs to be amended. Okay, cut.
Mary Jane?
What's happened to the position? I think through ARPA money that we were creating?
So the ARPA money, it's a great question, Mary Jane. So the ARPA money we're gonna use to start the next fiscal year. So they'll have the two fiscal years, rather than starting it at half a year. Because then what's gonna happen is, a year and a half from now, you'd have to do it instead of what we're doing right now with the money that's available through the navigator. We would then have to go back budgetarily and add that half a year.
Okay.
So we're just doing it in the front end versus the back end, so to speak.
So is this position gonna be, it will be a full-time position?
Absolutely.
Right, and what, what will the total salary be?
Uh, I think it's sixty, sixty-five.
Sixty-five, maybe. That's the annual.
Good luck.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number ten, we have an update on Sullivan Farm from Mark. May I?
Mark?
Yeah. Good evening. With the beginning of a new season, we thought it might be of interest to get an idea of what we planned. I think as most of you understand, Sullivan Farm is the longest, I believe, continuously operating farm in the town in New Milford. There have been two owners since eighteen forty-one. That's the Sullivan family and the town in New Milford. Over the last twenty years, we've had a hundred-and-eighty-one student interns that have worked at the farm, operating a variety of different activities. And, you know, while most of them end up in other types of employment, there are a number of them that have gone on to related fields. We have soil conservationists, we have environmental scientists, a lot of park rangers, arborists, timber resource managers, and actually some farmers, which is pretty unique. Prior to the pandemic, one of the major focuses of the farm was education. We had hundreds of kids that are coming through. Unfortunately, it came to a screeching halt. The school's transportation dried up. People didn't want to get together in groups. And for the last two years, we've basically operated it as a vegetable, hay, maple syruping farm. That's gonna change, I think, this year. We started in the fall by offering a five-workshop series on regenerative agriculture. The first one was supposed to have people actually coming. And I remember getting out of the car at Pettibone, it was a hundred-and-twelve degrees, and no one showed up. So we tried a different tact. We basically livestreamed it, and then took the videos and put them into a series of libraries. As of December, sixteen hundred people had completely watched at least one of the videos. And while there aren't sixteen hundred farmers in Southern Litchfield County, the idea that that many people would utilize it as a resource is, is pretty successful for us. We had a great turnout from the state of Connecticut, from the federal government, in the way of speakers. This spring, we're going to reintroduce another five videos. The Policy Committee on Sustainable Healthy Communities, which offers a farm-to-table dinner in Litchfield County every year. They raise money basically for educational purposes. They've approached us. They want to provide resources, they want to provide funding, and bring the videos up to a new level. So this is something that will continue. It's a great resource for the local farmers. I know personally that there are numerous opportunities across the state that offer all types of information. Unfortunately, most of them are in Leadyard, and they're at like seven o'clock in the morning, and so they aren't accessible to the farmers here. We're gonna, I think, become a clearinghouse for information. We're back to running programs for schools. Right now, we have three hundred kids who have signed up for the maple syruping tours. These are all local from New Milford. As the spring goes on, we'll begin to expand into middle school and into AP programs for high schools. Prior to the pandemic, we were running a lot of advanced placement curriculum outside of classroom courses. And we will continue to do that. We also are going to do the Maple Syruping Festival, which last year had, I think, three-hundred-and-eighty people who showed up, basically from out of town. That will morph into another weekend, which will be blacksmithing. We're gonna bring in several dozen blacksmiths with their portable forges, and we'll continue to do that. One of the advantages to these type of programs, it's not just great for the farm, it's also good for the community. There's spillage. You know, when you drive up from Manhattan, you're gonna need gas. You're gonna need to look for a place where you can get lunch. Hopefully, they'll take some interest in some of the other farms in the area. Hopefully, they'll come back. We see it as an effort to make the farm a destination, where people are continuously coming back for various activities. Last year, the council very graciously gave us two full-time positions. We have another year's worth of funding. We've reconstituted the Friends of Sullivan Farm. They met in December. They've agreed to raise the money necessary to make sure that these positions continue on an annual basis. At the same time, we're still running the farm. We do naturally grown vegetables. Some of that goes to the food bank. We also started delivering to the senior center. We have restaurants and markets that we also produce up to. Finally, it, it is an incredibly unique program. I believe it's the only town municipality in the state that operates a farm, which basically is run by students. It's done by committee, kind of like the old collective farms in the Soviet Union. I'm there just to make sure people don't get hurt. They basically run the place. They do an excellent job. Again, our focus will be on education this coming year, trying to get as many students as we possibly can through programs that we're running. We also started working with Chapag. We have students that are coming down to do their supervised agricultural experience there.
Mark, I think it's phenomenal what you guys have been able to pivot back now that, you know, COVID has dampened down and it's allowed you to do some things. Also, you guys have a farm trail, too, that people can use?
I, I forgot to mention, when there's nothing else to do, we maintain most of the town's hiking trails. There's a trail on the farm, which will hopefully be a cross-country ski trail. We just finished building a groomer, so we've got about two miles of cross-country ski trails up there. We need snow. We also take care of one of the historic graveyards in town, down on the Brookfield line.
Katie?
So, Mark, of course, you continue to do a wonderful job. And you were talking about the educational part and how sometimes some of the kids who've worked there, I think it's more than you mentioned earlier over the twenty years. But you have a person who works there, you hired to help run the place, who was there since he was, what, four?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, so, and he's turned into an excellent manager of.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of the individuals, the, the students who are there have been there for multiple years.
And they're, I'll just say, from my interaction with the friends, plus my interaction with just being there, and I've seen what you've done in the last few summers, the children that go in there, whatever their attitude, whether it's good, bad, or somebody made them do it, they come out. Well, there are the kids that get there that way, you know?
Yes.
They come, they come away, you know, with a much different attitude. There's something about hard work and collaboration and complaining with kids your own age that kind of brings.
Learn where your food comes from.
Well, that, and they just seem to have a whole better attitude about.
It's a work ethic that, you know, they, they walk away with.
They're a lot more polite, and I, I credit you and how you have done things with everybody there over the years for that.
Thank you.
And Mark, I'd also like to thank you and Sullivan Farms when we were in the depths of COVID, and we were really trying to come up with our plan, is what happens if we had really tremendous food shortages? And if you could let the council know of those two years, how much food did we bring down to Social Services?
I haven't, I haven't had it this year. I know last year, we delivered a ton and a quarter of fresh, naturally grown vegetables to the food bank. And again, we added the senior center this year also.
Yep.
And the tomatoes this year were about, what, a million of them?
There was a lot.
There were so many of them.
I'm just adding on to the praise. I want to thank you also. I thought the, the series, the, the new ag and the next stage was incredible. I watched three of them. The tillage one was my favorite. I mean, they were so great, and I really, I think it was such a good thing. And they're available on YouTube, so people can still watch them.
On YouTube, I believe the town's website, our website.
Yeah, just really.
And, yeah, a great response to it.
Yeah, thank you.
The speakers were fantastic.
I'm glad you're gonna do more.
Do you have a social media presence that you could spread that out?
We do. The Friends right now are putting together a website, which will, it's being done professionally, out of country, and it will, I think, propel the, the farm into the social media. We do Facebook, we do, but it's, you know.
But no time for that.
This will, this will be a whole different professional.
Well, Mark, I'm gonna just concur with all my colleagues here. I've, you know, I met you a little more than fifteen years ago when I first got involved here. And I, I, I drive by that farm every day, going back and forth to work, and it's, it's amazing. You keep it beautiful. I mean, I just saw all the, the gardens green up with a couple of warm days. You know, there's gonna be some confused plants out there.
There are.
But you've just done an amazing job down there. And I've met a lot of the kids, and a lot of these kids were friends of my, my children, and, and they just, they, like Katie said, and you said, they come out with a totally different mindset when they leave working for you folks.
Yeah, we're very lucky.
Yeah, it's really, you've been quite a blessing.
And adding girls was a big plus.
Yes.
And I hope you still have girls coming to the program.
We do, yes.
Okay.
No, I agree, Pete, I'm a fellow contractor.
You know, Mark's done a great job over there. I was joking before a meeting, maybe we should start another source of revenue with, with some eggs to breed the prices of eggs.
Right, right. We're gonna, we're gonna be asking probably during the budget this year for a safe that we can hide them in during the week.
Yeah.
I saw them the other day. We were talking at a, a high-end store up in Massachusetts the other day. Twelve dollars for a dozen eggs.
Really?
Dollar an egg.
That's a dollar an egg.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions for Mark?
No.
Mark, thank you for the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Did you have your three dollars yet, Mark? Did you have your three dollars yet? Your three dollars, did you get it yet?
No, what I'm doing though is I donate the money back to the town, and then I take it off my taxes.
Smart man. Item eleven, American Relief Funds. I'd like to move that we do the following with these appropriations. The VFW repurposed the awarded American Relief Fund for a VFW roof project, which was approved for a hundred thousand dollars, as we heard earlier. The project came to only sixty thousand. They would like to repurpose the forty thousand for new HVAC equipment.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just gonna speak to this if I can.
Sure.
So the equipment that they're talking, now that they've removed it off the roof, which was a penetration not only for rain to come in, but also for the heat to escape through that RTU on the roof. So now that that is gone, the equipment they're gonna put in is gonna do heating, cooling, dehumidification, and will filter the air. So it does, it has four components to it. It runs at a coefficient of performance of three-point-six annually, which means for every dollar of energy you put into it, you're gonna get three-point-six units of energy out of it on an annual basis. So not only will it help them make the place more comfortable and healthier, but it's gonna be far more energy efficient there. And I think this is a great use of the money. And I, I'm so glad you guys are going in this direction because it's gonna make that space so much more comfortable and so much more marketable.
Healthy.
As, you know, because it really can keep up with the demand. If you have a lot of people in that space, it will handle it. So I'm, I'm gonna strongly support this. This is a great move for you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hillary?
I agree. I think it's a great use, and, you know, hearing that further explanation is really helpful. Thank you for that. I just, my, my, my hope is that we can get a full accounting on ARPA, because I know there's been some given back, some, you know, like the, the Brit, Harry Brook, and so. been some given back, some, you know, like the Brit, Harry Brook, and so we kind of don't know where we stand, and so it comes in piecemeal like this, and we want to fulfill every request, but it would be nice to know, this is how much is left, and who's out there that still wants something, so...
Absolutely. We'll have it before the next meeting. And before we go to the vote, I also want to let the town council know something. So thank you, I want to say, first of all, to the town council and board of finance, because I sat in on the National Mayor's League, and what they were talking about was, a lot of these towns that haven't done really much with ARPA funding are now terrified because they may be having the money clawed back. Because of the new Congress, they may be clawing the money back. If you don't have the money appropriated for, that money could be gone. But good news for New Milford, right? We got right on top of it. We appropriated those monies, so we're guaranteed that they can't claw that money back. So that's good news.
What they're spending the money on when they make their decision is going to cost more money than it would have...
Well, it's true.
It's important that we bought at the height of the inflation, but I do see your point. I mean, there's a point of, you know, what did, sort of Torrington, you can look at as an example, they got their whole plan together before they allocated anything, right? So we did it differently, but I think that, I hear your point, but I guess it's just, I've always wanted a big plan before we spend, but...
But we'll get a listing of it.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chris?
Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commander.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Item 12 is an update from Greg Ostapow, our finance director. Say what?
Lawyer with problems.
Got problems? Right here, in River City?
Good evening, this is the December financial update. The mayor and I are in the process of reviewing the budget and meeting with departments for compiling the mayor's recommended budget. There is much work to be done ahead on this. With that being said, I want to apprise the council of the situation with the budget production. You may recall that when the budget was uploaded for this year, the FY22 budget uploaded instead of the FY23 budget. I remedied that, however, this issue has circled back when producing the FY24 budget. What is occurring is that instead of comparing the FY23, this current adopted budget, the system is referencing, unfortunately, the FY22 budget. Consequently, the variance between the two is incorrect. Fortunately, the detail does not rely on the same data source as the summary sheets and are thankfully correct. I have Tyler working on this issue to hopefully resolve it before we go into production. I transferred 804,000 from the Webster OPEB trust account to a Janey account invested in six months treasury bills yielding 4.77%. This will mature in July, at which point I will reevaluate our position. This rate puts the town more in line with actuarial assumptions used in deriving the valuation of the OPEB plan. As previously mentioned, I will be creating an internal service fund to receive revenue and pay the lease payments for the energy savings lease. I will be establishing that next fiscal year. Revenues are at 62.3% of budget. On a straight-line basis, we would expect to be at 50%. Tax collections are at 66.6% of budget overall, with current taxes at 66.4%. Virtually all revenues are at or above budget at this time, with the exception of Department of Aging, Land Use, and Parks and Rec. Expenditures. Expenditures on a cash basis are at 54% of budget. There are no overall concerns with expenditures at this time, with the exception of tax rebates and refunds and social services salary, for which you just approved a budget transfer. Both will require budget transfers. In summary, on a cash basis, revenues are at $68,323,236.58, and expenditures are $53,886,772.8, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of $14,436,464.50. Questions?
Katie?
Just, I know you probably don't know exactly, but do you feel confident that they will be able to fix the issue with the 22 coming in where it's not supposed to?
I can only hope. I can only hope. Do I feel confident? I can't really say.
But you do have, it is giving you by the item rate.
Yeah, the detail behind the summary pages, each department has a summary page, which gives a snapshot of the budget. Behind that is all the detail, which goes line by line, and that's correct. That's picking up, for some reason, it's pulling data from different tables. This report that I had written several years ago is called the Annual Budget Report, and it's a boutique report that I had established, and it worked wonderfully. I had no conception until I ran the numbers out of this particular report, that that issue would rear its ugly head again, but unfortunately, that's what I'm dealing with. So I'm trying feverishly to rectify the problem. If not...
You just have the detail.
You'll have to go to the detail rather than the summary page to get the true variance, otherwise you'll be looking at a two fiscal year difference, and it wouldn't be meaningful.
Well, thanks, Greg.
Any other questions for Greg?
Great job.
Oh, Hillary?
One question. When was the audit completed? Because I'm just confused why we can't get that audit now, because I thought it was a month ago or so that it was finished.
The books aren't ready. I mean, the information is available. The information was uploaded to the state OPM. And frankly, I believe that the town clerk's office has an electronic version of it, but the actual books will be distributed Wednesday night when the audit's presented. It'll be a hard copy bound.
But the town clerk has the digital file? Okay, thank you.
And then the council will get the hard copies that night?
Right, and whoever is not here to receive a hard copy, I'll put it into your mail slot. It'll be the financials, the single audit, state and federal single audit, and they usually do an executive summary of the highlights of the audit, and hopefully, there'll be enough copies of those as well to distribute.
And when I spoke to Walter O'Connor, the finance chairman, when Hillary had asked about having joint meetings, of which he would have rather had it just the board of finance, because that per charter is who gets the audit. But he also said, any of us that are there that want to ask questions, he'd be more than happy to yield the floor.
Greg, what's the balance on the waste management? Do you have that?
Off the top of my head, close to $22 million.
And are we done with that?
We're done.
Okay.
And again, like the last two years, we have not used any of the waste management for tax relief.
Which is great.
So, which is good, and that's about a total of $1 million.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Greg?
Great job.
Thank you, Greg.
Item 13, I'd like to make a motion, we move into executive session to just invite Attorney DeBella, and we have Brian Lastra here.
Second.
Thank you.
All's in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Ready? Motion to move back to regular session, no motions were made nor votes taken during executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second.
Aye. Yeah, was there a second?
Yep.
Okay.
Any abstentions, thank you everybody.
Okay. I'd like to, motion to suspend the rules to add to the agenda, item thirteen A regarding some tax appeals, some money to be moved into the tax assessor.
Legal assessors.
Yeah, legal assessors.
Second.
Any discussion, do you have any amount?
Yeah, for one hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I think we were adding to the agenda first, weren't we?
Yeah, that was to add to the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions?
Now, my motion is to move that one hundred thousand dollars into, for legal assessors, into the tax appeal account, I don't have an account number.
From contingency?
From contingency, yes, oh, you have the number, thanks.
Second.
So that would be from account one zero nine eight zero 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 five eight nine zero 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 to legal assessor account, one zero four one three nine zero zero five three one zero eight, the account, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, thank you.
Second half of thirteen A is I'd like to move that we move forty thousand dollars for potential tax refunds to the assessors.
We're gonna make that thirteen A one?
Yes.
Second.
Just to add it to the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, thank you.
Okay, thought I added that one, okay. So, here's the motion. Move to transfer forty thousand dollars from contingency account one zero nine eight zero 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 five eight nine zero 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 to assessor tax refund account, one zero four one three seven zero zero five nine five zero zero, in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, thank you everybody.
Moving on to item.
Spend it wisely.
Yes, spend wisely, yes, yes, cheer that for him. Uh, moving on to item fourteen A, I'd like to move that we set a date for a town meeting concerning the surplus funds, the suggested date is our meeting February thirteenth at six PM, six PM?
Second.
Yep. Any discussion, all those in favor?
At the last meeting, or when we discussed this, that you said you were gonna get the approval of the auditors first?
That's already been, you'll see that on Wednesday, yep.
Okay, just so everybody knows that it was approved.
Already approved by the Board of Finance as well.
Okay.
A second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, thank you.
Item fourteen B would be an update on economic development from the mayor.
Thank you, I'll be real brief, first starting off, December's Connecticut Department of Labor for New Milford, currently we have, okay, let me wrap real quick here, currently we are at two point seven percent unemployment, four hundred and one approximate residents are unemployed, there are opportunities for those four hundred and one, we are working with our Northwest Investment Board on continued opportunities for training, whether that be down in Danbury, Waterbury, with advanced manufacturing, also we have with Northwest Investment Board, we have our representative comes in at least once a month to social services, and they help them with resume building, different types of what to wear when you go to a resume, I mean when you go to a job, yeah, when they go to interview on a job, job interviews, also help them build their resume, so we're continuing on with that trajectory. Also, with a couple of other things on Patriots Way, we're working with Jack Healy and Eversource, we're looking to be putting in six EV stations, and so we're looking into that opportunity with some grant funding, also looking at another opportunity, instead of the town doing it, maybe have a private entity come in and do it, which would be no cost to the town, they would do all the upkeep, so we're gonna see which is the better return on investment for taxpayer, no, I'm bringing it here to the town council.
With those particular things that have a credit card, that you can put your credit card in?
Correct.
A question, if it wasn't somebody private that comes in, who in the town would do that maintenance?
It'd be the town.
I mean, somebody like DPW or?
What do you mean?
Well, I don't know, I'm just curious, who knows how to maintain an EV station?
Well, it would be the, you would pay for probably the contract of the company.
That's, yes, right, got you, that's, okay.
Also, we continue to be working with the school when it comes to the energy program, which is saving fifteen million dollars in capital, because we're saving the energy costs and also carbon footprint, and that's at no cost, I know our town, our town finance director was talking a little bit about that, we'll have more information at the next meeting for the council, I'll have some pictures from some of that stuff as well, over here on twenty-five Church Street here, they're gonna begin to work on their plan, they have issues with contractors and supplies, they're gonna be looking to bring over to zoning, that's gonna be seventeen units, that are gonna be right here across the street, speaking of units, they're gonna be occupied right by the police department, Popular Street, affordable housing there, right next to the police department, yes. There'll be some affordable housing, I believe it's twenty-seven, I've gotta double check with that, then which was approved on Pickett District Road, was a hundred and ten town home units, right Paul, I know you're looking at that over in planning, I believe those ones are mostly market rate, I think, with maybe twenty percent affordable, I'm not sure, and then up by where the old car wash was, they're looking to put in a hundred units of affordable housing there.
Are they, are they doing something on it?
Where's that?
Pickett District, it's right up by, where is that Paul?
Near the Rotary? Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, you can see where they.
Behind Sega Concrete.
All down through there? Yeah, yeah, okay, it's like a hundred and ten units there.
So the entrance will be into, from Pickett District?
Yeah, probably come in from Pitcher.
And then.
The one where the car wash was, is he moving on that now, doing something?
No, that's down farther, that's one sixty-nine, this is a little closer.
No, I'm talking about the car wash place, that he started a while ago.
That's the old Doctor's property.
But he stopped, yeah, the Doctor property.
Yeah, I heard there, it's gonna be a hundred units there.
Right, but is he doing any, I know, oh, no, I know, he stopped a little, yeah.
Which place are you in though, the third one you were just saying?
Yeah.
It's adjacent to where eighteen T is.
What road are we on?
This field, that's the Route Seven.
Crosses.
A cross, it's a facility in Tractor Supply.
You know, where the car wash was, yeah, finally.
There used to be an old self-serving car wash there, that's why we refer to it as the car wash.
Yeah, that's right, sorry Hillary, it was a long time ago.
I have a question now. Is there any chance we can have some kind of, the affordable housing that's coming over, can we contact like Ukrainian refugees or something, we can maybe save some apartments for those guys that escaped the war?
So this is, this is private, so it's private developer, private property, so, you know, they could maybe work with the US government.
So it's not state regulated, they cannot?
The state regulates it, but I mean, it's the private developer that develops it, puts their money into it, and does that, so.
It's a combo of office and residential, as I recall he had planned?
On Pickett District?
No, no, the one on Route Seven, that's what I thought he was asking, the hundred.
The plan is, yeah.
Yes.
It's changed several times over the years, but the plan was, yeah.
And then you also have on Lanesville, that's all affordable, it's right on Lanesville, that, I believe it's got it CO, and I know they're pushing. Yep, they're pushing out on Lanesville applications to take for, for that, then on Boardman, I think it's seventeen affordable housing units that they're building there as well.
That looks good too, looks very nice.
Yeah, it increases our four percent by quite a bit.
Also, real quick, what's that?
Yeah, because we're down at four percent, what, four point three or something like that?
Yeah, it's added a lot to the, lots of the stock of, of housing here, here in New Milford, also, real quick, a bagel shop is looking to open in Staples Plaza there, so they're gonna be, what's that?
Great.
Another bagel shop?
Yep, another bagel shop, it'll be open there, next to.
We finally got one, now two would be a little too.
Bagelman back open?
Yeah, Bagelman reopened.
Yeah, Bagelman's reopened, they just, he, he closed it to get some new equipment in that he, that he needed for his, for his restaurant, so he's working, working on that. Also working with Valerie Douglas, our purchasing agent, as we're putting out the RFQ for our traffic study, that was put out, we had people come in already, I believe in about nine or ten entities, they've asked us a few questions concerning that, hopefully we'll be able to award that contract within the next few weeks, so we'll be getting that underway as well. Also working on putting out the RFQ for Boardman Bridge, so with ARPA funding, so we're gonna look at and assess with that funding, what the cost is gonna be for that, and that's all part of the River, Riverwalk area in the northern part there, which ties into not only Sega Meadows, but across the street, where it'll be part of the Med and Still area piece, where we're gonna be looking to go into the back of there.
So Pete, is that gonna help with the parking, so you can stay in that parking lot and walk across the bridge?
Yep, so you'll be able to walk across the bridge, put flowers on there, it'd be a great destination point to walk around.
Have you ever seen the Flower Bridge? I'll send you a picture.
Kinda, kinda like our, our bridge across here too.
Yeah.
Which gets a lot of, a lot of activity.
Can I ask you a question on the traffic study?
Yes.
That's, that's gonna be for all sort of traffic, because I, I bring it up every year with the Board of Ed, I, I have a particular issue over on where we're coming towards, where the old Ben Chevrolet was, there is a particular spot that is a great daycare center, but that bus stops right in the middle of Route Seven, and I sat there for about eight minutes about a week ago, and cars go in both directions, now the, the bad part is, in the summer, when the, when the traffic is flowing over the top, it's very hard when they come over the top to see that, so I hope they address that.
This study we're talking about is just for downtown?
Oh, it's just for downtown.
And then the state of Connecticut is doing a full-blown traffic study on Route Seven, and that's, that's done through Western Connecticut Council of Governments.
We, listen, we don't need a study to all go and visualize when that bus is bringing all these wonderful little kids, that bus could easily go on the state road, because it doesn't make a left, it continues up Route Seven, so it'd be very easy for that bus to pull on state road, pick those kids up without blocking the traffic in both directions for ten minutes, to load the kids up safely, and then bring them back out onto the road.
I mean, that's something that we can talk to.
We always bring it up to the Board of Ed, and it always becomes that the, the, the bus company is controlling our flow of traffic in town and hurting our economics, I personally have always had an axe to grind with this, it's something I think we have to really drill home this year, because I, once again, a week and a half ago, I saw an almost bad accident, people coming over the top, nobody could see the bus down, it's very hidden, it's out of lines, out of eyesight.
I know what you mean.
And all of a sudden they came down, and I saw the cars go screeching, and luckily, nobody hit each other, but it was almost six cars, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense anymore, we have too much. We have too much traffic on that road. 10, 15 years ago, before the, before the highway really was, brought so many cars, but it's been going a long time.
Why don't they just pull down there?
They keep saying it's a, you've got to work, it's the bus route and that it will change our negotiation with the bus company. I mean...
To turn in there and come back out?
I've heard the same story, Katie. I've asked the same question almost for about 12 budget seasons. It's the same answer I get back. It makes zero sense. Zero sense. So, I hope we bring it up during budget time, but somebody's got to start bringing that message back to the Board of Ed. Like, this is one bus that's blocking our commercial artery in the middle of the town twice a day and potentially causing an accident. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, I agree, Tom. Not only just traffic, but it's a safety issue because the other day, you mentioned I was coming down toward north and that bus had stopped. And we were talking about it today. A lot of people don't understand four lanes, when you can go through it and when you can't.
Right.
And when there's just structure between the two lanes and not. And I stopped and three people were flying by me.
Flying by.
And I just pray to God, thank God that they're getting off on that side anyway, into the daycare, but one day, and I hope it never happens.
They do.
And then, it's going to, when a kid's coming across the four lanes and somebody just comes, because when you get four lanes and wants to stop, somebody doesn't see that blind.
Just remember, we've been bringing it up to the bus. Mayor Jane, you and I asked that question about 10 years ago and we didn't, and we got...
It doesn't sound like it's the Board of Ed's problem. It sounds like it's the bus company's problem.
It's a bus, but that they use the Board of Ed negotiation as the excuse to not remedy this.
Because they'll say they need more money.
Is that legal?
They can do whatever they want. Yeah. And, you know, Doug, it also brings up another point. It's not just a kid coming back across. If somebody comes flying over the top and the one person of those three decides to stop because he's seen the bus, that bus, that car behind him could easily hit him and careen towards the bus.
And it sounds like it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Right.
It's 50, 55 to...
It's just for the safety of the kids. It makes no sense.
So, what I'll do, right, is I'll email Anthony, okay, because he's the...
The bus contact.
He's the business director for the Board of Ed. I'll ask him the concerns of the council. I'll have him send it back to me and I won't see everyone because then that makes it a meeting.
Yes.
But I will, once I get it, then I will push it out to everybody, his answer. And if you guys have any questions individually, then you can reach out to Anthony.
So, another suggestion, get the police involved.
Police are involved.
They are.
What are they doing?
Well, they can't make the bus company...
They can make an order, they can...
They can issue an order.
That would be fabulous.
That it's an unsafe...
Oh, state highways, then?
It's a state highway.
It's a state highway.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
How can they stop on that? That seems crazy.
Hillary, I mean, I know everybody's seen it here at least once, right?
I've seen it.
I mean, as a parent, it, you know, it's just, it scared the hell out of me the first time.
When, they're allowed to give a ticket out on, on the...
Well, they will if they, if they catch people going by the school.
Right.
All those lanes have to stop.
Right.
You know, just because it's a separated lane.
Right.
But they can't force a bus to take another route.
Not, 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 not a state highway.
Okay.
Maybe get the state...
And the rear end collision, I've seen them almost happen where cars are going and one guy realizes, oh, there's a bus and slams on the brakes and the car behind him is all set to keep going.
Who's the bus company I'm reporting to? Who do they report to?
The bus company reports to the Board of Education, who hires the bus company through a contract.
Okay, so, we're going to have a budget hearing. It's going to be the budget hearing.
So, to me, I think, so to me, I think the easiest thing for us is we're opining on something that we're thinking about is let's talk to Anthony, see what his thought process would be. I will then, when he sends it to me, so we're not triggering a meeting, I will then send it to all of you guys, what his answer is. If you have any questions for Anthony, then reach out to him individually.
Okay.
And ask him those questions.
I just have one question. So, I, I know the bus, but I really, you know, I didn't realize. So, they're stopping there because of the daycare center?
Yeah.
So, these are children leaving their public school and being dropped off there?
Correct.
Yeah.
Or getting on in the morning.
Or getting on in the morning to get on the bus.
To go to school.
So, it's the morning and the afternoon?
Yep.
So, if a family wants a bus to take a different route or add a stop or do something differently, they appeal to the Board of Ed Superintendent's office. If nothing happens, they get a hearing with the Board of Education to make a change in the bus route. And I would suggest that Town Council or Mr. Mayor, you request that we take it that far to a hearing with the Board of Ed to have a change in the bus route.
Yeah, I would happily...
The funding that's preventing it from happening because the bus company says they have to change their route, would cost more money.
Right.
They have to go in, it's going to take time.
But, but no one's actually taken it to the Board of Ed.
No.
That's what we should do.
I'm agreeing with you.
Follow the process for making an official change that comes from here.
I agree. The alternative route is 50 yards in front of it. We all know the road. It's state road.
But there's, there's more to it than that. I, I used to do all this when I was on Board of Ed. And the problem is where they would be driving, there's insurance issues as well. So, we need to make absolutely sure that they can legally, not just because it can do that, because they're not allowed to back up, they're not allowed to do all kinds of things. What if the bus can't do that?
No, I thought about the backing up part.
We need to know more, but I really think they need to take it more seriously. So, if, Mr. Mayor, if you hit a dead end, my suggestion is let's move on and, and go to the Board of Ed and ask for a hearing.
Get a hearing. It'll all show up.
I agree.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's do it. I mean, from a safety factor for the kids.
Yeah, that's it. That's the only reason.
Safety factor for our drivers.
I'm glad you said that.
That's the only reason.
Literally, it clogs up that section of road for 10 or 15 minutes. It's just a weird...
Magic.
My husband many times, working at Tractor Supply.
Right.
He said so many, he said, I don't get this. Why are these buses stopping on Route 7?
Because, because the traffic comes up to Tractor Supply. I mean, that's how far it goes and then it stretches all the way over to the light, past Savings Bank at Danbury and up Route 7 towards like Wetmore's. It's bizarre. It's like this twice a day traffic jam that could be avoided very easily.
It's just not safe.
Yeah, it's not safe.
What they may not be able to do is they may not be able to make the travel here.
But they don't have to. They pick them up on the road right here.
They may not want to drop a truck.
Okay? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Go to item 14C. I'd like to move that we table the action on approving the, the ordinance that we spoke about earlier for the cannabis dispensaries till our next meeting so that our town attorney can take the time to put it in order.
Second.
I agree with that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Who's got the deepest voice? Come on.
Motion to adjourn.
Do Walter.
I don't want you to finish, that's all. Motion to adjourn, that's all.
We're going to have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody.
I don't know.